Regular meeting number 31 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Nancy Day Alcar, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Derek Bass Sr. of Serenity Baptist Church here to pray with us this evening. Pastor Bass, welcome back to council.
Let us pray. O most gracious and all wise God, our heavenly Father, we come before your holy presence realizing and understanding that you are the author and the finisher of our faith. And as we come together in solidarity one with the other, on behalf of this city, we are asking for your covering over our president, we're asking for this covering over this panel. We're asking Father God that you will continue to lead God and direct them in a way with that which you will have them to go, that everything will be done for your glory and for your good. We thank you in advance for what's going to take place. We thank you in advance for what you're going to do, the way you're going to do it, but most importantly, how you're going to do it in the mashless name of Jesus. Continue to give them that peace, that standard all understanding, continue to grant them the understanding of what it is that needs to be done on this day. This is the day that you have made, and we have all come to rejoice and to be glad in it. So we give it all to you now, and we ask it all in Jesus' holy and righteous name we do pray, and for his sake we ask it all. Let every heart say amen.
Amen. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Day Alcarr, Dorans Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Day Alcarr, Dorans Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other announcements to be read into the record?
Not this time.
We will go around the dais with any announcements or resolutions from my colleagues. We are joined by Councilmember Bangston Virchilia. We are very grateful for him being here this evening. Councilmember, do you have any announcements or resolutions?
Nothing from me this evening, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to our first Open Streets event that kicked off in the Short North this weekend. Open Streets is a concept where we put people before cars, we shut down major thoroughways so that people can celebrate and be in community together in the street, and we did that on High Street on this past Saturday. Our next Open Street event is coming up on 6/1/4, so we'll do another reminder, but I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out, for making Open Streets possible. This is a demonstration for us to understand how we again use our streets for all people and make it safe for all people to use every single one of our streets, whether you were on foot or on a bike or a scooter, that these are your streets as well. So congratulations to our friends in the Short North. This was also, I know, a boost to many of our local makers and creators and a great kickoff to Pride. So with that, happy Pride, everyone. Thank you, that's all from me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Day Alcar.
Thank you, President Harden. I have one resolution this evening, and I'm looking out to see if our guests have arrived yet. David Patson, Audrey Flaw, and Angel Perez.
Councilmember, if not, I can come back to you.
Okay, yes, thank you.
All right. Press for two.
Thank you, Council President. Just a reminder that we are in day 55 of the public comment period for Zoning Initiative that will run through next June 10th. Many folks have been engaged in the Zoning Initiative to modernize our zoning code for the first time comprehensively in 70 years. We've had over 1,200 individuals visit the Zoning Gallery here downtown. We've had over 25,000 individuals that have visited the Zoning website. The Zoning Gallery will remain open until that comment period closes, and the Council President and myself will be hosting a public hearing on this initiative regarding both, more specifically, housing and parking related to the changes proposed in this code this Thursday, June 6, starting at 5:30 at the Southland Sauda Community Center. There's more information certainly on the council Facebook page and my Facebook page if folks are interested in coming out to that hearing and learning more about the proposal prior to council considering any amendments to the proposal at this time. So hopefully, we had, I think, about 70 or so people came out of the first hearing a few weeks ago. Very robust comments and participation, and certainly hope that continues as the public comment period rolls on. So with that, just want to invite people out on Thursday and visit the Zoning website as well.
And I would just add to that, there have been over 1,000 visitors to the Zoning Gallery while we've had this process open. So we still encourage, as we have a few more days, that the Zoning Gallery is open, to please, please make your way down there. Councilmember Day Alcarr, are your guests here now?
I saw them peeking through the door.
The floor is yours.
Yes, I'd like to invite David Patson, Audrey Flaw, and Angel Perez to come forward to the podium as I read the ordinance. Columbus City Council would like to formally recognize and celebrate the Columbus Fury for its historic inaugural season. On May 11, the Fury ended their first season with the fifth-best league record, and the Fury's exciting gameplay and family-friendly atmosphere has brought a powerful force to the capital of Ohio, and they have the honor of being Columbus's first-ever professional women's sports team. And I will now invite our guests to share the good news of the Fury with us.
Sure, do I press the button or just talk?
Nope, you're on.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to introduce a couple of folks that are with us. This is Coach Angel Perez and our community ambassador Audrey Flaw, who you may recognize too as an OSU volleyball Hall of Famer and does some broadcast work for us as well. Thrilled to be a part of tonight and appreciate being here, and an exciting first season for us. You know, about this time last year, we were, I think, coach had been brought on board, and I was a little bit after that. And, you know, I don't think anybody knew exactly what to expect this year, but first season went reasonably well. It's an honor to be a part of the lone professional women's sports team currently in the city. Hopefully, there'll be many more down the road, and excited about what this is. This is high-level volleyball. It is Olympians, world-class, our world team members, NCAA Division One All-Americans. The product on the floor is terrific. We have a fantastic coach, and I think we have a league that will continue to grow over time and a great sport that is pretty easy to get people to follow and like. So we appreciate everything.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Must be at least one.
So congratulations. I just want to say, as a mother of two female athletes, it is so great to see us prioritizing women's sports, to have a place where our girls can see themselves, that they can see a trajectory for the thing that they love, that drives them. We've been to a couple of games. I am a big fan, Dale Boricua, to Coach Perez, and many of his players are also Latinas. So it has been such a joy to see and so happy for, again, having this team here and for the role modeling that they do for all female sports players in our community.
Thank you.
I just want to share a really quick story. So I had a friend who had his niece visiting Columbus a few weeks ago to take a visit at Ohio State and a couple other central Ohio colleges, and she's from a very rural part of the country. And the takeaway from her visit, she enjoyed all the universities she saw, but they went to a Fury game, and she was floored, not only of that, the focus on women's sports, but also the amount of community support and enthusiasm within the building for that kind of event. And for someone who had, I think she had never been to Columbus before, the amount of, that was one of the biggest takeaways that she shared with her uncle that brought her here about what Columbus sort of meant. So this is certainly a team that's more than just sports and something that I think when we think about how to, who we are as a city, it really has stood out to me as so many people have embraced this team and certainly, not just doing well, but the community has sort of developed around it. So just wanted to share that with you and congratulate you all.
Thank you for that. I guess probably one of the things we always like to talk about is just how big volleyball is in this area. I'm not sure if folks recognize just how much, but this is, out of the, all the regions in the country for club volleyball, this is the second-largest in the country. Soon, you know, right on the verge of being the top one, with over 27,000 club volleyball players in the region, which would be Ohio and West Virginia. I think a lot of you are familiar with all the volleyball tournaments that happen down at the convention center, and it obviously is great for the hotel industry and the business in the city, and we're just glad to be able to take that to another level by having a pro team to kind of connect the dots, because you have Ohio State, which has a great programs, men's and women's, and they're very, very good friends of ours too, and appreciative of all their support this year as well.
If there are no other comments, then I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Day Alcarr, Dorans Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it. Nancy, your colleagues want you to put it on.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That is all I have, Council President.
All right. Councilmember Faber. Councilmember Green.
Yes, so I just wanted to do one more quick plug for the Zoning Gallery. Councilmember Faber and I will be hosting, well, at least it will be my last stakeholder evening, for the Health and Human Services Committee or anyone else who would like to join us at the Zoning Gallery this Wednesday on June 5, from 5:30 to 7:30. And so if you haven't had a chance to come there again, please come and join us. This is the last week for public comments, and I'm very, very excited to dig in a little bit more on how updates to our zoning code can intersect with our Health and Human Services sector. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Nothing from Councilmember Remy. Councilmember White.
Yeah, just a quick plug for Tuesday's Zoning Gallery. So if you can't wait till Wednesday and you have a lot of feedback, you want to come out on Tuesday, we'll be hosting the gallery from 5:30 to 7:30 for anyone in the community who wants to share their feedback. Every single gallery that I have attended has had a lot of discussion, a lot of great feedback from residents, so if you can't wait until Wednesday and still want to share feedback, come on out on Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I will pick up where Councilmember Barosa de Padilla left off in wishing everyone a happy Pride. I have one resolution this evening, and I'd like to introduce Resolution 0159X-2024. It's to celebrate the 2024 Pride Month and Annual Pride Festival in March, which is titled "Live Out Loud." I'd like to invite my good friend Denzel Portius to come to the, I'm not seeing Denzel, so I'm going to call an audible. Tonight's awardee of the Steve Schallerberger Award, after council this evening, will be illuminating council, the city hall in the colors of the Pride flag is in the room. Major Stephen Snyder-Hill is here. Would you actually come and accept this Pride resolution for me this evening? Certainly, thank you for your service, but thank you for living out and proud. Columbus is a city that is proud of our diversity and inclusivity year-round, but during June, we especially stopped to highlight our LGBTQ+ community. Our community members are our neighbors, our friends, our loved ones, we are business owners, we are owners, we are artists, and we are leaders. We are Columbus. We know that the LGBTQ+ community experiences hate, and we're seeing it at dangerous levels. Too often, our community members are being targeted just for living their authentic selves. To the members of our trans community and everyone else who has been scared to be themselves because of this hate, Columbus stands with you. We will contend to stand with you, not only in June, but all year round. It really is an honor tonight that we get to celebrate Major Snyder-Hill. He does not only serve our country and in active duty, but he also has been serving the city of Columbus for, I think, 21 years in the Department of Public Health, and so we're just so grateful. All of your work, all your advocacy certainly, certainly, certainly speaks to why you are so deserving of the Steve Schallerberger Award tonight. Do any of my colleagues have any? I'll put you on the spot. Would you like to say a few words first?
President Harden and City Council, I can't tell you what an honor this is, and I'm so proud to work for the city of Columbus and the leadership and the inclusivity of the city is just amazing, and you can be who you are, and I just love this place.
We're so proud. Are there any questions or any comments? Please.
So Steve, it is such an honor to recognize you tonight, and I don't know if you guys know this, I actually used to work for Steve at the Health Department many years ago, and, not many years ago, but some years ago. And just the level of commitment that you bring into everything that you do, whether it's your advocacy for the LGBT community, your advocacy for the city, your advocacy for the people who you work with or who work under you, it is absolutely incredible to see and witness, and I try really hard to carry you with me every day as I'm, you know, we're faced with tough decisions and oftentimes, you know, placed in a position where we need to advocate, right? And you, time and time again, always stood up for what you know to be true and what you know to be right, and it has helped drive major, major progress forward, not just here in the city, but around the United States. And so very excited to be able to honor you tonight, and thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And I'd like to, second, feeling very honored. We've worked together in the addiction and harm reduction space for quite a while, but it's been such an honor to be your friend and to know of you all this time. And when I heard that you were getting this award, I was so super excited. It was like, oh my God, my friend of mine. So thank you so much for all you do. The city is so proud of you, and you show us how to be better citizens of our city. So thank you so much for all that you do.
I appreciate that. You guys are all my heroes.
Council President, I just wanted to say, I know that we're, this evening, we're going to talk about this during the illumination, but I think that it's just important to note that at a time when we see a historic number of bills coming across state houses around the country that are harmful to this community in particular, that do not stand for the values of cities and neighborhoods and communities across the country, that this year Pride means even more than it almost ever did. That's hyperbole, it always means more, but I think that, you know, I think, I want to thank you for your service, especially at a time when it doesn't always seem that everyone's standing, that you're standing for ideals, when it doesn't always seem that those ideals stand for you, and that is something to be commended, and thank you for that. And I think that it is, cannot be overstated, and I think that this year, as we illuminate city hall and all the speeches and all of the celebrating that we do, for folks to remember that this is a 365 proposition, that keeping people safe and creating a sense of belonging for people in our community is paramount, and it certainly is to this council. So today is much more than just a celebration of people and who they are, but it is a statement about what our values are in this city. So thank you for your service, and thank you, Council President.
Very well said, Councilmember. With that, we again want to invite folks to join us directly after council for the illumination, but with that, I move for passage of Resolution 0159X. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Day Alcarr, Dorans Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any comments from our elected officials? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance resolution from consent action tonight? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Day Alcarr, Dorans Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance and Governance Committee, ordinances 1197, 1334, 1401, and 1501-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, Resolution 141X-2024, ordinances 1355 and 1453-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 1418, 1447, 1462, 1494, and 1518-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinances 1365 and 1373-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinances 1306 and 1459-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 1361, 1456, 1533, 1542, and 1544-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 1285, 1352, 1478-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1295, 1297, 1320, 1326, 1333, 1376, 1411, 1415, 1417, 1425, and 1516-2024. Zoning Committee, ordinances 1507, 1567, 1563, and 1571-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the first reading portion of the agenda. Hanif Mohammed is speaking on ordinance 1533. Welcome back to council. Just a reminder, if you could state your name, if you represent any organization, you have three minutes. Welcome back to council, sir.
Before I start, I also wanted to speak on a non-agenda. I know he's too young for me to fill out a slip, but it was, I don't know if I could do them both, back-to-back, if I had.
Well, non-agenda is...
We have to wait on that?
Yeah.
All right. It was kind of like a two-part, but I get into it anyway. Yeah, so you're gonna have to wait. I got him amped to do his part, but I'm just explaining to him that you gotta wait, and how soon as you guys start that.
It has started.
Again, man, I love coming down here and looking at the curtains and all that, and I'll, you know, I'm gonna start off by saying, good evening. I come to you to speak on the homeless problem in Columbus, Ohio, and the impact that it's having on the south side of Columbus. Now, I'm in favor of this resolution, and almost any resolution that can help solve this problem. My only concern is that by the time you guys solve this problem, like, the south side is pretty much gonna be dead, or it seems like it's changing for the worse. I always thought that by placing one of your solutions, that touchstone placed in Southfield, I always thought that was gonna have a negative impact, and now that Mayor Franklin is beginning to close, I could kind of understand why. I wouldn't want my kids to walk by there and have to see the different things that me and my son see on a, every day. Now, the homeless problem in the whole, it has affected businesses on the south side, it has increased theft to the point that businesses are saying that they gotta hire armed guards, and the citizens are beginning to feel the impact by these businesses beginning to treat them like criminals, and they're putting it out there in the paper that they are going to begin to start checking receipts and different things like that. My only problem is that people like me are going to be impacted. So as businesses close, you know, schools close, residents begin to flee to the suburbs to, for a better education for their children and a better way of life, that tends to leave, you know, the city that I know is starting to look real funny and look real weird and everything like that. So yeah, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And speaking of how the homelessness has affected me, on March 12, I was shopping with my son at Kroger's. One of the security guards threatened to shoot me and my son. Well, basically, they pulled their gun like they was gonna shoot. We got a minute left. Go ahead and do that while you've got your time.
On March 12, 2023, me and my dad were discriminated against Kroger's. Me and my dad are in a grocery store and realized that a security guard has been following us for around two minutes or more. I saw other customers shopping, but he was following us. Then he said, said all his walkie-talkie, and he called someone up to my dad, and he comes up to my dad with a gun and said, "You gotta go," and we didn't even get our stuff. I was scared because I thought he was gonna shoot me or my dad, but my dad sent me to the car, so I was worried for my dad most.
And this is an impact by them saying that they're gonna check receipts. I don't feel like I have to wear my non-threatening gear. This is my non-threatening gear right here, but I like to go out in sweatpants and different things like that. I'm currently, we have to shop at this Kroger's in German Village, but we used to go to one on South High, so the impact of the homelessness as a whole has just affected us, and I wanted to show y'all that. And I don't want to apologize for coming down here and wasting y'all's time, but I apologize that I had to come down here and say this. And once again, man, I love, I think you should put marble right here, it would make you feel real good, and like, the whole thing was like marble. But thank you, guys, you have a wonderful evening.
Certainly, no apologies needed at all. This is, this is why we are here. I'm sorry that you had that experience, and I'm sorry, young brother, that you had to be there for that and experience that. We would like to, you know, connect you with Kroger's, like, that is a very specific situation that we want to make sure that someone else, that they hear your, the issue and what you went through, and so it can instruct how they move forward with, as they, as they move forward with what they are gonna do in their stores. But I appreciate you coming down. On your larger issue of homelessness, we appreciate your continued advocacy. You've been down here several times before, and it's consistent, and I think that from Councilmember Faber to all of us, we are, we are working on it very, as hard as we can, so we appreciate you being here. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolution of Expression 158X-2024, Finance and Governance Committee, ordinances 1168, 1246, 1294, 1311, 1317, 1318, 1324, 1343, 1399, 1473, and 1519-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 1171, 1202, 1363, 1366, 1398, 1431, 1436-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 1170, 1232, 1267, 1346, 1347, 1360, 1430, 1441, 1465, 1470, 1471-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 724, 1024, 1545, 1562, 1580, 1581, 1583, 1584, 1585-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 1370, 1400, 1450, 1455, 1480, 1546-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 1474, 1475, 1476, 1482, 1483, 1508, 1521-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 1299, 1331, 1336, 1354, 1358, 1395, 1457, 1528-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances... Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 671, 673, 1327, 1337, 1416, 1469, 1490-2024. Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0124, 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, and 137-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items as needed its consent? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Awkawar, Dorans, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Consent agenda is approved. I will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation portion of the agenda. We're gonna deviate a little bit this evening. Last week, the city received a fact-finder report regarding the International Association of Firefighter Local 77 Contract, our local firefighters' unions that represent more than 1,500 firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. As provided in Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22, and Columbus City Charter, Section 8, Section 111.01, council will go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters regarding public employees. Specifically, we will be discussing the contract for IAF Local 67. No vote or formal action of any kind shall take place during this executive session. The following, following the executive session, council will come back into this public meeting, and any votes that are needed will take place and be recorded as part of regular meeting number 31. For the record, I'm inviting the following people to join us in executive session. Mayor Andrew Ginther, City Auditor Megan Kilgore, City Attorney Laura Baker-Morish, City Clerk Angie Blevins, Elon Sims, the mayor's chief of staff, Chris Moses, Columbus HR Director, Kathy Owens, Columbus Finance Director, Chris Long of the Finance Department, Adam Robbins of the Finance Department, Jennifer Edwards, the attorney for Baker-Hostetler, my chief of staff Mike Brown, and our director of LRO, Matt Erickson, as well as Darlene Wiles, who is the deputy city auditor. All members of council, including Nick Bangston, will be joining us. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of reviewing negotiations related to bargaining sessions regarding public employees' compensation and other terms of employment? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston?
Yes.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla? Ms. De Awkawar? Mr. Dorans? Ms. Faber? Ms. Green? Mr. Remy? Mr. Weich? President Harden?
Yes, we are in executive session.
With us for the rest of the evening, Barosa de Padilla, De Awkawar, Dorans, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to spin with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, De Awkawar, Dorans, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. Will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorans chairs the committee. All members serve one. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, first, a little bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislation zoning committee this evening that require waiver of second reading?
0964-2024, 1505, 1511, 1503, 1504, 1506, 1509, and 1514-2024.
Thank you, Clerk. I now move to waive second reading on those items right aloud.
Barosa de Padilla, De Awkawar, Dorans, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Now, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation if ordinance is to have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if we have a public speaker signed to speak against an ordinance. Only those who own property within 125 feet of an address that is subject to variance request are legally able to speak and make public comments on the council variance pursuant to legal advice in the city attorney's office. All speakers on the council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission and applicants are always able to speak on the ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. But we do need to alert city staff of their attentions to speak at a zoning committee hearing. This evening, we've received five public speaker slips on two different ordinances this evening. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, show the truth, nothing but the truth, as usual, answer to payments or penalty perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich and Phil Asher from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Mark Chavillas from the Division of Planning, Dan Blushman from Traffic Management and the Department of Public Service, and Deputy Director for Housing Strategies, Aaron Prosser, have been sworn in. Before we begin tonight's zoning committee, a few items to point out, as we do from time to time with legislation on our agenda. We will be considering eight total ordinances that could potentially pave the way for building 361 new housing units across the state of Columbus. If approved, the new units will be built in different neighborhoods across the city, including West Sciota, East Franklinton, Northwest, Far West Side, Near East, and the Westland communities. As we all know, our region is experiencing a housing crisis as economic growth continues. At the current rate of Columbus, Columbus is underdeveloped for housing that we need to house these neighbors in our community. The units we will vote on tonight represents less than 2% of the close to 20,000 new units we need per year just to keep up with the growth of our city. As always, we'd like to point out when we have a number of pieces of legislation that allow for new housing to be created in our community. The first piece of legislation to come before the committee tonight is ordinance 0964-2024 to rezone 4747 Dublin Road, being 14.71-plus acres, located in the west side of Dublin Road, being 1,700-plus feet south of Hayden Run Road from our rural district, and PUD Planned Unit Development District to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The site consists of six parcels, four of which are developed with single dwelling units as a result of a recent annexation. The remaining two parcels are undeveloped. The request of rezoning will allow a multi-unit residential development with a maximum of 192 units. Staff notes the proposed rezoning district is consistent with citywide initiatives to provide more housing to all areas of the city. The proposal has approvals from city staff and a disapproval from the Development Commission. Due to that disapproval from the Development Commission, we will now hear a staff presentation before we hear from the applicant and public speakers who signed up to speak on this ordinance. We'll first start with the Department of Building and Zoning Services. Mr. Phil Asher, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, members of council. The 14.71-acre site is subject to a limitation text, which includes the following: restrictions on the maximum number of dwelling units, allowing a maximum of 192 units; supplemental development standards restricting building height to a maximum of 37 feet 4 inches; perimeter yard, traffic access, roadway improvements, sidewalk, and pedestrian connectivity; landscaping and streaming; existing tree preservation and deplacement of three-story buildings on the site. Additionally, the text includes commitments to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plans, and proposed building designs will correspond with submitted building elevations. The proposed use is similar to multi-unit residential developments within the area. Within 3/4 of a mile of the subject site, these similar developments in the area allow for up to 8 units per acre, 10 units per acre, 12.7 units per acre, and 15.9 units per acre, respectively. Efforts were made by the applicant to reduce the intensity of the proposal. The overall unit count decreased, the density decreased, the number of three-story buildings decreased. Concurrent council variance CV... Sorry. Is that better? Concurrent council variance CV 23-132 was withdrawn by the applicant on May 16, 2024, due to no longer requiring a building setback variance from Dublin Road nor a building height variance. Staff remains in support of the requested LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. Any questions to my colleagues for the department at this time? Seeing none, I would next ask the Division of Planning and Ministry, Mark Chavillas, and the Department of Development to speak to plans approval of this project. Mr. Chavillas?
President Pro Tem Dorans, members of council. Planning is in support on this application. We do not have a comment on the proposed land uses. Planning's comments on land use are only applied when we have an adopted land use plan in place, and we do not in this case. So our comments relate to the project's design. Planning's comments for design relate to Columbus citywide planning policies, which are in place at the location. Relevant guidelines from citywide planning policies include open space being integrated into new development. New development should include landscaping and trees. Mature trees should be preserved whenever possible. And C2P2 also includes building design guidelines. Planning's review found that the application is consistent with these guidelines. Initially, we asked for revisions to the original site plan and asked for elevations to review per C2P2 design guidelines. Revisions were made in response to our requests. Elevations were provided and reviewed and deemed consistent with C2P2. At that point, planning moved to full support.
Thank you, Mr. Chavillas. Any questions to my colleagues for the planning division at this time? Seeing none, we move to Mr. Dan Blushman from the Traffic Management Division at the Department of Public Service. Mr. Blushman, floor is yours.
President Harden, Pro Tem, President Pro Tem Dorans, members of council. Access to this site is within the jurisdiction of the city of Hilliard, which has reviewed and approved a traffic access study for this proposed area of development. There is a commitment within this application that the applicant will be required to be responsible for the cost of adding a pedestrian crossing of Dublin Road along its frontage to connect to a future shared-use path along the east side of Dublin Road that is planned to be implemented by the Franklin County Engineers Office. This future shared-use path has received a morpsy attributable funding commitment for construction in 2028 or 2029. All of their comments from the Division of Traffic Management have been addressed, and we can support this application moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Blushman. Any questions from colleagues for the Traffic Division at this time? Seeing none, we move to Deputy Director for Housing Strategies, Ms. Aaron Prosser. Ms. Prosser, floor is yours.
President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, thank you for the opportunity. The proposed rezoning of 4747 Dublin Road in the Hayden Run neighborhood supports the Columbus housing strategy by building new housing in a high-opportunity neighborhood within the Hilliard School District close to amenities and transit. The proposal not only adds housing units that are in high demand, but provides new housing options in an existing residential neighborhood that is close to transit, job, and educational opportunities, and neighborhood amenities. The proposal meets two out of the four pillars of the housing strategy. The first is build. In order to slow the increase of housing prices in our region, city, and neighborhoods, we need to build enough housing, and every community must be part of that solution. The Hayden Run neighborhood currently has 1,576 housing units, all of which are single-family homes. The 92.7% are owner-occupied, therefore, the existing housing options in the area are limited, and opportunities for rent are severely limited. The existing households in the neighborhood had a median household income 70% higher than the city median household income, and the median home price is 27% higher than the median home prices in the city of Columbus. A family would need a household income of $127,200 to be able to afford, to be able to access the neighborhood. Since 2000, only 29 units have been added to the neighborhood, and there's a 0% vacancy rate, suggesting a demand that is above what the existing supply can offer. The second pillar is include. The proposal is located near public transit amenities along the Bethel Road Hayden Run corridor, such as grocery stores, pharmacy...
Part of me, I will ask that folks in the gallery, please allow the department to provide their presentation. There are public speakers that will be signed up to speak on this ordinance. I would ask that folks are respectful to everyone involved in this process. Thank you.
Such as grocery stores, pharmacies, medical care, daycare facilities, and schools. While the housing scarcity will drive up housing prices throughout our region, in these locations, we expect to see accelerated housing price increases as the market responds. Therefore, the investment in an amenity-rich neighborhood will be critical to building economic diversity in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Deputy Director at this time? Seeing none, at this time, as our standard protocol is, I will invite Mr. Sean Mennel, the applicant, forward to give a presentation to council on the project. Mr. Mennel, welcome back to council.
Thank you, President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, members of council. Good evening. My name is Sean Mennel, applicant, 250 East Town Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. We have been working on this project for about a year and a half now. Our first official meeting, or kind of formal meeting with the neighbors, took place on April 25th. And we've had, we've had two large group meetings since then. We've had two Development Commission meetings since then, and most recently, we had a meeting here at council down the hall convened by Chair Dorans. During that process, we've heard a lot of feedback from the neighbors, and we've made changes throughout the process. I think that the meeting we had two weeks ago here was probably the most impactful in terms of the changes that we made in response to feedback that we've heard from, from the community. Those changes are reflected in the ordinance that's before you tonight, and they include a reduction in density of the project from what we presented at Development Commission of 220 units to 192, which is about a 12.5% decrease in density. That took our density down from 14.96 acres per, or 14.96 units per acre to 13.05. That reduction in density allowed us to remove the council variance request that we had for a setback from Dublin Road, and we have been able to increase our setbacks on Dublin Road and on our western boundary line to 50 feet or more. There is one section of the western boundary line that meets the, that is at the 25-foot setback, but the majority of that boundary is 50 feet. The reduction in density has also allowed us to address another concern that was raised by the community, which was our parking ratios. We were at 1.53 spaces per unit. We've now, with the reduction in density, have increased that to 1.7 spaces per unit. We have reduced the buildings, the size of the buildings on Dublin Road from three-story to two-story. There is a corner of a building on the southeast corner of our, of our site and Dublin Road that is still a three-story building. So we have three-story buildings on the southern boundary. I was looking to see if you had it up. On the southern boundary are the three three-story buildings. They're the only three-story buildings on the project, and those are identified clearly on the site plan. No other buildings can go above three stories. Those are the, the only buildings that will be three stories. And those sit along the largest setback between the neighbors and us. The minimum setback at that point from building to property line on that southern boundary is 65 feet, and some go up to 150 feet, some areas. That's also where the stream protection corridor runs, and it has the grating that runs down to the stream and back up. So that's the least, it's the, it's the largest break between the two properties of all four boundary sides. We've also agreed to extend the six-foot opaque fencing that we had on portions of the western boundary to the majority of that boundary. It does not cover a small portion on the southwest corner to preserve existing trees, and that's a very dense portion of the existing trees. The reduction in density and kind of compaction of the, the project has allowed us to expand our tree preservation corridors, the areas that run around the site, so we're able to preserve a number of trees. We have also added on the, on the, from the tree perspective, we've added a number of trees to the Dublin Road boundary right-of-way. We've added also a few trees strategically placed on the portion of the western boundary that is 25-feet setback. So we've, we've placed the trees kind of within the viewing triangle of that section. So in that meeting, I think our changes, which we came in proactively to that meeting and presented, I think were well-received. I know that, you know, not everyone's happy with the final product, but we, we think that we've put together a good project and made a number of concessions and changes that I hope alleviate some of the concerns of the, of the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Mennel. Any questions from council colleagues at this point for the applicant? Mr. Mennel, I will likely call you back up after we hear from the public speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, as I mentioned earlier, we did have three public speakers signed up to speak on this ordinance. Again, council's policy is 3 for, 3 against. The first speaker we have come before council on this legislation is Mr. William Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, welcome to council.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. My name is Bill Schmidt. My wife Carol and I are 35-year residents of Columbus on Seattle Fleet Drive. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to this rezoning request and offer a few thoughts for your consideration. Before I go any further, if I, if I may, I'd like to ask, if I could, a show of hands of folks that are here today in the gallery, who are coming here today in opposition to this zoning. Quite a lot, not, not as many as the Development Committee, but we've got a lot of representatives here because of the short notice. First, this rezoning would permit high-density apartment complex to be built in the middle of single-family homes, many of which are ranch-style... of single-family homes, many of which are ranch-style homes on all four sides. The site is simply not a good fit for such a complex. The proposal is inconsistent with cities' C2P2 planning policies, which call for high-density residential development to be within established commercial centers along primary corridors with access to transit. The site associated with this rezoning application does not comport with any of those guidelines. Future residents in such a complex will need to use their cars to get anywhere, adding to traffic congestion and risk of injury if they decide to walk along the berm of 45 mile an hour Dublin Road for any reason. Secondly, within a two-mile radius of this site, at least a dozen high-density multifamily complexes exist with more under construction and/or being planned, all consistently in high-density corridors with sidewalks and on public transportation routes. Those existing multifamily complexes in the area offer thousands of residential units with hundreds currently occupied. And the third point, as documented in my letter to all council members, demographers are now revising their population projections downward and by a lot. One recent article bears the title, "Ohio's plunging birth rate dipped below the national average last year for the first time since 2018," new CDC data shows. An excellent book entitled, "Empty Planet: The Shock of Global Population Decline," is a must-read for everyone involved in planning for future housing needs. Central Ohio will not be immune to the dramatic sea change of population decline that has already begun. Of course, we've had a lot of in-migration from other parts of Ohio and beyond in recent years, but we need to examine the driving factors for that and reassess the notion that we'll see 1 million new residents by 2050 based on this new data that is coming to light. In conclusion, because the zoning request is not a good fit for this site in light of new data on population trends and the current shortage of single-family homes, this 15-acre site should be for single-family homes and would be a game changer for families' homeownership. I respectfully request that we reject this rezoning request, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Any questions from council members at this time from Mr. Schmidt? Seeing none, I do want to ask Mr. DeVillis, the speaker mentioned inconsistencies with C2P2, and you had mentioned a moment ago that this fell within. I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit more?
Sure. Well, the, the reference to the, the density on corridor really is a guiding principle from C2P2 that generally enacts when we've done a land use plan for the, with the community. In this case, we do not have a land use plan, so it's, it's, we don't consider it applicable in this case. And that's why, as I said, that's why I said that our primary review was for design guidelines. I, I will note that at 13 units an acre, Columbus citywide planning policies would consider this medium-density development, and I think BZF staff noticed, noted the PUDA zoning that's adjacent, so we consider that compatible.
Thank you, Mr. DeVillis. The next speaker to come for council on this ordinance is Ms. Holly Hollingsworth. Ms. Hollingsworth, welcome back to council.
Good evening. I've lived for two dozen years a few hundred feet from this site. I'll remain there long after all of you are gone from council. I'm speaking on behalf of hundreds of my neighbors, your current, today, living and breathing constituents, not some who might come to Columbus at some point in the years ahead. We live in the area immediately surrounding the site and have been investing in it for decades. For more than a year, we wanted to work with this developer, who refused. What changes he did finally offer, the notary signed it eight business days before tonight's final vote, were presented to us as a done deal without asking even once what input we might have on it. The City of Columbus Development Commission unanimously recommended against this rezoning. You might say, well, that was before he made changes. Well, the changes were deemed by the chair to not need to go back for review by the experts at the Development Commission, so the changes did not meet a standard of significant change. The site sits in the middle of almost a square mile of single-family homes with an average of 2.3 units per acre. The island in the middle would, even with these latest updates, be more than 13 units per acre. That's more than five times greater than the surrounding density on parcels that had viable homes, not dilapidated structures or empty lots. We understand the need for housing. Since the beginning of this process, the neighbors have been very reasonable in asking for an appropriate density on this site, and we've agreed to support two to three times the average density in our neighborhood. We are begging you to please, please not ignore the surrounding density and agree to this unreasonable request. How often do residents come to you and agree to support triple their area's average density? At five to seven units per acre, a marked increase from the surrounding density, the neighbors would be supportive and agree the plan would be compatible with our community. Everything, everything within three-quarters of a mile of this site is either one-story or two-stories. The current plan still includes the only three-story buildings in the area. Why shouldn't those be two-stories and be consistent with our community? I want to make sure you saw what the Development Commission said unanimously about this application. Quote, "Property does not lie along a corridor, has no bus service, and appears an anomaly, excessive in density and scale. This application has triggered the most opposition I've seen in 20 years. Approving this proposed development would create an extremely poor precedent. Completely out of scale, too dense and over crowds the site, disrespects the neighbors and the guidance of the Area Commission and the Development Commission. I do not feel that placing this density of housing among single-family homes is appropriate. The burden on the neighbors would be intense, as the roads are not prepared to handle that abrupt increase in residential traffic," end quote. If this plan's approved, city council will be setting a new precedent for ignoring the transition of density in the zoning process, which will be hard to ignore in future zoning citywide. This would almost eliminate the need for any zoning process. Please do not set this precedent in our city. We're not NIMBYs. We're trying to work with this applicant and the city. This developer said himself to the Development Commission, quote, "For us to go back and get support is a completely new project, new design, new project," and he's right. Turning down this rezoning doesn't mean no new project. It means one better than is what's currently proposed, better for you, better for the people who will live there, and yes, better for us too. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council members? Any, any questions from council members from Ms. Hollingsworth? Ms. Favor.
Thank you for your testimony. You said that you all are, were happy to, to meet with the developer and embrace density. So what does that look like if the developer, and I'm not going to get the numbers right, so Chair, you might have to correct me here, but if the developer came down from what was, I believe, 220 to now 192-ish is what I heard, where were you all, what was the sweet spot for you all?
As I said, we're more than happy to see two to three times the average density in our neighborhood, and that would put us at that five to seven units per acre. Literally, if that's what we were looking at here tonight, every single person in this room would go home and say, bring on the extra housing. We want this in our community. We want this. We need it in our community. It would be appropriate to our community. We don't, we have one lane of traffic in each direction. There'll be a shared use path in five or six years. How many people are going to be killed between now and then on Dublin Road? So, you know, the, the two to three times our density, bring it, please. We would love it.
As compared to where we at now?
We are more than five times.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, council members, from Ms. Hollingsworth? Seeing none, the council member?
When you say more than five times, that's what, with the 194 units?
The, the current 192 is more than five times greater than all of the surrounding density. Yes.
Any other questions, council members?
No. Do we have a presentation on any road plans that Public Service has, has put forward?
Yeah, I can defer to Mr. Blushman about the access that the applicant's committed to. Mr. Blushman, if you could speak to that, and certainly I can ask the applicant to speak to that as well.
Sure. On this application, the access point and permitting agency is the City of Hilliard. So they had reviewed and approved a traffic access study. They had, were comfortable with the two access points to service this site.
And council member favor, to let you know, so if, we're talking about like five units per acre compared to what's here, that would amount to 70 total units on these parcels compared to the 192 that's before us here today.
If I may, Chair?
Yeah.
There has been no traffic impact study, and there's none requested, which, we're on a road that's right by the river. There are limited access points across the river. We have wanted a traffic impact study, just to say what more can we do to make it safer, and that's not been requested, never been done, never been offered. We would love that.
Ms. Blushman, I know the City of Hilliard is the one that did the impact study, but could you talk about the City of Columbus's difference between an impact study versus a access study and sort of where those thresholds are at and where this project lands and those? And when we talk about the difference between an impact study and an access study, why that matters?
Sure. And just, so the, the City of Columbus Traffic Standards Code has certain thresholds for when a traffic impact study and a traffic access study is required. So this development with the number of units falls below the threshold to provide a traffic impact study. So the analyses are limited. Even if this wasn't the City of Columbus, we would have the same requirement. We would have required.
And what is that threshold? Could you?
It is, it would be typically 200 trips in a peak hour. So this, this would be probably about, I would say this is about 50% of that threshold of where we are, somewhere probably 50 to 60% to that threshold. So it's not, not even really close to the, it's not like it's just under, but it's, it's well below the threshold that we would typically require a, a traffic impact study that would require, require analyses of off-site intersections and, and further concerns. So that, that, that is, you know, we, we are comfortable with that and being consistent with other developments that are rezonings that come forth before this body, and it's subject to the consistent treatment compared with other, other applications that move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Blushman. Any other questions or comments from council members? Before we go to the last speaker, council member.
I just have one more question, ma'am. Can you confirm, I thought, so just on the other side of that Dexter Falls neighborhood, I thought that the Charleston neighborhood had three-story apartment complexes.
I don't know. I'm not familiar with that name. There are certainly three-story apartment complexes, which is what my neighbor was talking about, within a mile. There are many, there are thousands of units on Edwards Farms. There are more going in on Truman. There are more going in on Hayden Run. There are more on Riverside. There's many, many, many multi-story buildings outside of, just outside of this neighborhood. This is in the middle of the area that is single-family homes.
Council member, anything else? Thank you. And I want to direct a question either to Director Prosser or Administrator DeVillis. When we talk about the density difference, we're talking about this being medium density, and I know that can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people when we talk about density. You know, the first, the lightest touch of density is a duplex, to the highest touch of density is, you know, a multi-story building that's, you know, 10, 12, 13, 14 stories. And when we talk about what is sort of consistent development patterns, you know, the idea of Columbus growing generally, the idea of dense, denser housing near single-family housing, that's the reality of, that exists in many parts of the city already today, but likely to be the reality in, in the future as, again, Columbus continues to grow. So I wondered if either one of you could speak, either from the planning standpoint of how we sort of look, look at that when we're talking about what is the appropriate density, because we're talking about most single-family houses, while certainly ranches are two-stories, et cetera, we're talking about a story or two. We're not talking about the difference of moving up 10, 15 stories or something, about how that, either, if, either from the housing standpoint of how that sort of has changed in Columbus here recently. We have many older neighborhoods that are experiencing this for the first time, and that's a big change for them to sort of see this come through for the first time. But also from a planning standpoint, how do we sort of address this of what we feel like is appropriate when we know we need more density generally for housing purposes across, I don't know if either one of you want to take, take a whack at that?
I'll take one quick whack as we think about the, the functional housing market and kind of where we're headed in terms of adding the growth in population we're, we're adding and where in those high-opportunity areas we can expand the housing choice. So as we think about densities, it's also about expanding the opportunity for different types of housing, so that as that pressure is relieved on some of those neighborhoods, we start to see that transition happening where you could come in as a young renter into the community, then you could climb up that property ladder, right, and enter into homeownership in the community. As we have really not diverse housing stocks in particular areas, it really limits our ability to, again, shift through that property ladder, to have access to those amenities and opportunities at different stages of our lives, either as we're coming into being young professionals or as we're aging in place. And I think opportunities like this for varying densities give that functional housing market space back into the community by providing a wide range of options.
Thank you. Mr. DeVillis.
I mean, that would be my primary comment, is, is, you know, a mix of housing types in any neighborhood is, is a best practice, and 13 units an acre exists in all neighborhoods throughout the city. And, you know, mitigating factors and introducing 13 units in a neighborhood that doesn't have it, the key is the design, the landscaping, the buffering, the building elevations, the things that we've reviewed for. This is the.
I would ask folks in the gallery to be respectful. Thank you. Thank you. The, do any of my colleagues have any other questions or comments for this particular speaker?
Chair, if I may respond to one thing that was just offered.
You may.
The five to seven units per acre, that is triple our existing density in the area, would provide that different types of housing. We would love that. That would be fantastic, and we've tried to tell the developer that many times to no avail. So, and there is no 13 units an acre anywhere within a square mile of this area.
Well, I think that there's other multifamily within a mile of this project, but.
About a mile.
About a mile, so we're talking about the same area. Thank you. The next speaker to come for council is Mr. Chris Bruzezzy. I apologize, sir, if I got that wrong, but Mr. Chris Bruzezzy. Welcome, welcome to council, sir. And please, I apologize, I probably butchered your name, so if you want to correct it on the record, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. The name's Bruzezzy, Chris, and I thank you for your time tonight. I'm a registered architect. I also live in the area. I've been practicing for 40 years. Multifamily is our area of expertise, and over that time, we've produced more than 100,000 units. I would say, on a positive note, that I think the recent changes the developers made are positive ones, and it's going in the right direction, but I don't think we're, we're still there yet. And that does not change the fact that this is point-blank just spot zoning with a very high disregard for context, appropriateness, or respect for its surroundings. I hear the comments being made here. There are very few apartment complexes in the, in the City of Columbus plopped right in the middle of single-family housing. This is also not on a future corridor or a planned corridor. The density, as already stated, at 13 units an acre is still five times greater than the surrounding context, and three of the proposed structures remain at three stories. If you look at the elevations, the dimension's not there, but the peak of these roofs is 45 feet tall. So I want to emphasize, this development should not exceed two stories. There is absolutely no precedent for a three-story structure in the immediate vicinity, and again, at 45 feet height, this is going to be significantly taller than the surrounding residential structures. And as a side point, I think if you look at the plan, I believe a similar density at all two-story could be achieved simply by changing the ratio of product on site from less townhomes to more walk-up style garden units. The closest precedent, we've talked about some other surrounding apartment projects, is Brittany Place. Interestingly, it was unanimously disapproved in 2002 at 14 units an acre, but ultimately approved at a reduced density. And it, and that approval had many specific restrictions, restriction in density, landscape buffers, earth and mounds, fencing where appropriate, lighting restrictions, and a lighting study showing no light pollution, increased setbacks, they've already done that, thank you, preservation of existing tree buffers, that's in place as well, thank you. So this project was unanimously rejected by the Development Commission, not just once, but twice. After the first hearing, it was tabled. We thought they were going to come back with changes, but they made no changes at the second hearing. And they are asking for your approval tonight without going through the Development Commission. This should not happen. The project is still not quite there and should be subject to review by the Development Commission, considering the revisions that have currently been implemented. That is why the Development Commission exists. We understand the need for additional housing, but I don't believe that changing the rules to accomplish that is in the best interest of those surrounding this development or the City of Columbus. I urge you, do not let the tyranny of the urgent need for housing be an allowable excuse to expedite development without due process and a complete review. Listen. Listen to the hundreds of neighbors who have voiced their opposition to the development as proposed and send the project back to the Development Commission. Or if you choose to approve it tonight, it needs to be reduced to two stories as a condition and a reduction in density, as Holly so convincingly argued. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from councilmembers for this witness at this time? Thank you, sir. I would ask for the applicant to come back and make any remarks regarding any of the public comments we've heard.
Thank you, Chair Dorns. I think one of the comments that I want to make, and it was relative to those last comments and maybe some of the others, we, on the western boundary and the northern boundary, are all two- and three-bedroom townhomes. So the goal of that was to transition to the single-family homes. They are roughly the same size from a height perspective, from a exterior aesthetic perspective. And then with the changes that we've made, adding the fence, the additional landscaping, and the preservation of existing trees, I think it, I think it does have a nice transition. And then, of course, lowering the buildings on Dublin Road to two stories, I think adds, and the increase in trees adds to that consistency while going down Dublin Road so that it doesn't, you don't see that, that masking of a three-story building.
Any questions from councilmembers to the applicant at this time? Mr. Middel, I did want to mention, the last speaker mentioned some buildings being 45 feet high. My understanding is that this is well below that with the limitation text. That's, that's part of this proposal at this time?
So the, the three buildings on the southern boundary are the only ones that will reach, they actually reach 37 feet, four inches. The two buildings to the west of Dublin Road fit within the, a 35-foot height district for the step-up, step-back provisions. The only portion of a building that exceeds 35 feet, and we've addressed this in the limitation text, is that it's building number 10. It's the one on the southeast corner of the, of the parcel. And that is the one most, we showed some pictures in the meeting that we had, it's, it's the most screened by existing trees. And it's one corner of that building that exceeds 35 feet at 37 feet, four inches. But all of the other buildings are two-story or, I mean, two-story.
Thank you. And we talked about, one of the things that I've heard from lots of emails and calls we received, but also in actual substantive meetings with folks in the neighborhood and the joint meeting that we had around concerns around parking. So there's never been a parking variance that's been requested for this project, but you also have made changes because of that concern around parking? If you could speak to, and you mentioned you went from 1.5 to 1.7. What does that mean from a unit standpoint? How, how does that match what's sort of being proposed from a unit standpoint? Because I think there's a lot of folks' questions about if in fact there's not, you know, easy accessible code of service and/or, you know, sidewalks, that this would be a primarily car-centric development. So the concern has been, is there enough parking because there's not on-street parking for folks to utilize? So will there in fact be enough parking essentially for the development as built?
Sure, thank you. So there were initially with our plan, or the, at least the most recent plan that we made changes from, our parking ratio was 1.53 spaces per unit. Code requires one and a half. With the changes, we're now at 1.7. It's just under, it's, I think it's 0.96 spaces per bedroom. So we're just under a parking space per bedroom. And with the, the reduction in density, it's allowed us to kind of reconfigure the, the site layout, allowing for those parking spaces. And one of the other concerns that was raised by the, the neighbor, some of the neighbors at the Civic Association, and then again in some of our meetings, was that people would park on, in, on their side streets and cut through their yard to reach the, the project. And I think the extension of that fence along the western boundary, I, I don't, I don't, I think with our, with our parking ratio as it is, nearly one space per bedroom, I don't think we're going to have that issue. But with the fence making, you know, making it more challenging, even if someone did try to, to attempt to park on their street and cut through the, I think the fence addresses that concern.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmembers to the applicant at this time? CNN, thank you. It would be an understatement to say that council has received a lot of feedback from folks in the community. This legislation has been at council for, for months at this point. We've had dialogue with folks from the neighborhood individually, and we've had folks dialogue with the applicant, and we have brought the applicant and folks in the community together. And we can talk all day long about what projections look like for the City of Columbus, what change looks like for the City of Columbus. Change is never easy. But at the end of the day, we are facing a housing crisis. That's simply the fact. And that crisis is driven by an imbalance in supply and demand, and we need to build more housing. And that has to happen across the city, not just in certain neighborhoods, not just in the outskirts of the city. We need more housing across the community. We need to see more multifamily. We need to see entire continuum of housing being built across the City of Columbus. Changes, this is going to look different, and that's going to be scary to folks. And when we look at and evaluate projects about how, whether or not the zoning is appropriate or not, this council has leaned in to wanting to make sure that we're creating more opportunities to provide more supply on the marketplace while also trying to respond to folks in our community to make sure that development is done as appropriately as possible. You know, this is one of those situations where council leaned in, met with folks, and tried to figure out a pathway forward, a compromise. That does not mean that everyone gets whatever they want, and what was on the table to start is different than what is on the table now. That meeting that we held here at City Council a few weeks ago, folks walked, walked out of that meeting, in my opinion, saying that this was a good compromise. I don't know what has happened between then and now, in which, excuse me, I am, please be respectful. On May 16th, I chaired a meeting between the applicant and members of the Sciota Property Owners Collective. At that meeting, at our request, this applicant provided a compromise that we requested of them after the inability of the parties to have meaningful dialogue. That compromise is ultimately what's before us here tonight. And I feel like that compromise is more appropriate than where we came from to start. And folks may reasonably disagree with that, but ultimately, when we consider these projects that come through, when we consider the density that's in play here, medium density, not even high density, that this is an appropriate project to move forward. So therefore, I would ask my colleagues to support this project, and I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla, de, by voice, I'm sorry.
I did not call for it by voice.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Ordinance is passed. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 1505 dash, I'm sorry, passed. Next, we have ordinance number 1505 dash 2024 to rezone 2180 Venus Street, being 3.2-plus acres located on the northeast side of Venus Street. And Night Drive being LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The site consists of two parcels with a library and a parking lot and one developed parcel. The request of rezoning will allow an expansion of existing library and parking lots. The proposal has approvals from City Staff, Development Commission, and the Far West Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? CNN, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Ordinance passed. Next, we have ordinance 1511 dash 2024 to rezone 2005 De Moore's Road, being 8.79-plus acres located on the west side of De Moore's Street, 90-plus feet north of De Moore's Highlands Lane, from AR Real District to LR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The requested zoning, requested zoning will allow the site to be developed with 166-unit apartment complex. Staff notes this result, this will not, this will not add incompatible uses to the area. Concurrent council variance will be considered later on the agenda this evening. The proposal has approvals from City Staff, Development Commission, and the Westland Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? CNN, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Ordinance passed. Next, we have, we move to the council variances portion of the agenda, which is, first ordinance is 1503 dash 2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3323.19 uses and 3389.032 animal kennel or animal shelter for the Columbus City codes, property located at 625 and 657 West Town Street to allow a dormitory accessory kennels and outdoor runs in conjunction with a guide dog training facility of the EF East Franklinton District. Site consists of four parcels, one undeveloped, one developed with a single-unit dwelling, and two developed with an office building at the East Franklinton District with the Dodge Parks Sub-District. The requested council variance will allow dormitory use, office kennels, and outdoor runs, cages, or other structures for open-air confinement of animals to be in conjunction with existing guide dog training facility operated by pilot dogs located on the east side of 577 West Town Street. The variance request is necessary because the proposed dormitory and kennel uses are not allowed within the Dodge Parks Sub-District of the EF District. Additionally, an animal kennel, kennel or animal shelter with outdoor runs, cages, or structures for open-air confinement of animals requires a special permit from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Due to the nature of the facility, this special permit requires, requirement is waived. The East Franklin Review Board has issued a certificate of approval for the variance request for the dormitory accessory kennels and outdoor runs at pilot dogs and has been a staple of the East Franklinton neighborhood for over 60 years. Certificate of approval will also be required for the building site design as part of the site compliance review process. The proposal has approvals from City Staff, East Franklinton Review Board, and the Franklinton Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? CNN, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Adopted. And finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Thank you, passed. And next, we have ordinance 1504 dash 2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3361.02 permitted uses for the property located at 5811 Salmo Road to allow a C3 commercial district use in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of one parcel development with a bank and requested variance will allow expanded commercial uses that are consistent with, with the plans, land use recommendations. The proposal has approvals from City Staff, and while there is no area commission for the area, the Northwest Civic Association has registered their support. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? CNN, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Thank you. Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Adopted. And finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 1506 dash 2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3363.41 storage of Columbus City codes, property located at 2180 Venus Street to allow reduced, a reduced outdoor storage setback in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant has received a recommendation of approval from Staff and the Development Commission for the concurrent rezoning we considered earlier on agenda. The requested council variance will allow for reduced outdoor storage setback from 20 feet to 10 feet along the northern and eastern lot lines for a contractor's storage unit, or storage yard, I'm sorry. Proposal has approvals from City Staff and the Far West Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? CNN, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Accepted. I next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Adopted. And finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Protam, Dorns.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1509 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3312.49 required parking, and 3332.05 A4 Area District Lot with Requirements, 3332.21 Building Lines, and 3332.26F Minimum Side Yard Permitted, Columbus City Codes, property located at 1563 Greenway Avenue to allow three-unit dwelling produced development standards in the R3 Residential District. This site consists of an undeveloped lot, and the requested council variance will allow the construction of a new three-unit dwelling. The council variance is required because the current district does not allow three-unit dwellings. The proposal has approvals from City Staff and the Near East Area Commission. We also have two speakers who request to speak in favor of this ordinance. I believe the applicant and his construction director, so I want to invite them to the podium if they're still here. Gentlemen, welcome to council. We have Mr. Rob Ellis and Mr. Paul Cavito. Paul, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, sort of mess up your last name. Cavito?
Civitello.
Civitello, thank you. Welcome to council.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Rob Ellis. I've been selling multifamily in Columbus for the last 10 years.
Hey, I'm sorry, because it's a council variance, I got to swear again, so, thanks. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, that you shall answer pains the penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours, gentlemen.
I've been selling multifamily for the last 10 years. There's an incredible amount of interest in, in existing housing, which has kind of run out. You know, renovations, things that are vacant, boarded up, are, are 100 years old. There's an incredible amount of demand for new housing. For the last year, I've been studying new housing. I have four to five different council variances, rezoning applications. A lot of the private sector, they're building homes at a loss right now, subsidized by tax dollars. We've come up with a floor plan that I used to live in at the quarry, which is a two-bedroom, one bath. Me and a roommate moved when we were 22 years old. We've sacked it three times. We've, we spent a lot of times with multiple of the neighborhood commissions and groups. We try to do this in a very low-risk area, which typically is where property values are the most. Single-family homes are selling for about $320 a square foot right now downtown and downtown adjacent. So if we build them in those areas, it gives you good equity. There's been no local, there's no local liquidity that's expressed a lot of interest in developing these. These are partners from New York, Miami, Austin, Texas, Los Angeles. We travel around the country and bring those dollars here. So from, we have a couple of these come in in multiple districts. We have support on this one. And just wanted to introduce ourselves, what we're doing. In my opinion, being able to deliver, deliver three housing units instead of one on any infill lot, we can't really pick the lots, we can't pick the sizes, we can't pick the shapes or how they come, but the majority of these lots had homes built on them. So we're saving a little bit of money, and I've spent a lot of time going to all the, going to a lot of the meetings, working. We've made a lot of modifications that Paul will talk a little bit about. And we're just wanting to introduce ourselves. I've been to a lot of the zoning meetings. I was speaking on Thursday, very, very focused on delivering small, compact floor plans that allow for rents to be, you know, the average single, like, in Grandview, I pay 1,700 for a one-bed. This is a two-bed, that's the same price. So the smaller we go, the better. We looked at 100 floor plans for the design, so just wanted to introduce myself and thank you for the opportunity to make a difference.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Paul?
Yeah, thank you for letting us come. I just mainly wanted to say that, you know, we've been testing this product in Newark, and we're about 62 days in and almost to completion from breaking ground 62 days ago. Our plan is to do quite a few more of these, and that's why we wanted you guys to meet us and, and see us and understand what we're trying to do in the future.
Yeah, again, appreciate you both being here and making sure we know you guys are. Any questions from colleagues for the applicant or the representative? With that, I'm going to turn the calling of votes back over to the council president. So I will first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted. Thank you. And finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Dorns, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1514 dash 2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3333.18 Building Lines and 3333.35G Private Garage of Columbus City Codes, property located at 2005 De Moore's Drive, to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the LR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant has received a recommendation of approval from Staff and the Development Commission for concurrent rezoning that we considered earlier on our agenda tonight for an apartment complex contained up to 166 units. Requested council variance will allow the reduced building lines and increased heist detached garages for proposed apartment complex. The proposal has approvals from city staff and the Westland Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Accepted.
Next, I move to adopt the fines of staff as the fines of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Council President, that's all we have on tonight's zoning agenda.
Seeing no further business coming for his zoning committee, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene regular meeting in five minutes.
The ordinance we have is ordinance 1464-2024 to authorize the city treasurer to enter a contract with OST Inc., the current state of Ohio's IT staff augmentation contract provider as may be necessary to support the city's treasury banking implementations and citywide merchant services to waive the competitive bidding provisions to enter into such contracts to transfer funds within the city treasury 2024 budget to provide funding for the contract to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the general fund and declare emergency. Council members, the city treasurer's office are in the midst of transitioning its merchant services and the getaway solution from Huntington Merchant Services and First Data to JP Morgan Chase Bank. Many of the city's agencies employ the use of the treasurer's banking accounts for collections of city revenue. These agencies often use third-party software providers that need to connect to the city treasurer's bank. Transitions such as these are complicated and require much in the way of IT support, project management, business analysis, or technical resources. While JP Morgan Chase Bank provides some technical support, the treasurer's office needs its own IT support for the citywide effort. The additional of technical expertise will enable the treasurer's office to provide assistance to city merchants during the implementations, such as documentation of business processes, solutions, and problem solving. The legislation authorized the city treasurer's office to waive competitive bidding under a contract with OST Inc., the provider of the state of Ohio's IT staff augmentation contract. As demand is high for technical expertise, the state IT staff augmentation contract offers the best opportunity for the treasurer's office to obtain these necessary services quickly. Emergency legislation is requested, as so do permit the procurement of the support for the city's banking services without any delay to keep them moving forward. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. And as I read the next piece of legislation, I'll invite Mr. Brian Ross from Experience Columbus and anyone that he's got from his team up front. So, next, we have ordinance 1582-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to modify the agreement with Experience Columbus to authorize the transfer appropriations to authorize an appropriation of expenditure within general fund in the neighborhood initiative sub-funded, declare an emergency. Council members, as mentioned in this title of this ordinance, appropriate $725,000 for Experience Columbus, the city's premier promoter, marketer, and seller of Columbus as a destination both regionally and nationally. This funding is a result of a joint operating appropriation from council and the administration, and will go towards operating marketing needs that will allow Experience Columbus to execute strategies necessary to capitalize on this summer's tourism boom, as many people are traveling quite a bit in our post-COVID era. With us in the chamber tonight, we have Brian Ross from Experience Columbus, and I'll let him make sure he introduces his member of his team and her title as well to speak on the importance of these funds and what Experience Columbus has planned for the summer, and hopefully our new, talk a little bit about our new tourism tagline as well.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Council President Harden and President Pro Tem Dorans and City Council. Actually, I have Jessica Sullivan here with us, who is our Director of Community Engagement. So, glad to have her with us here. But I'm Brian Ross, President and CEO of Experience Columbus. We wanted to make sure, and I wanted to show my appreciation for you allowing us to be here to speak on ordinance 1582, and thank you for your support on ordinance 1366 and our MBE program, which onboarded over 100 small, local-owned businesses that are minority-owned in 2023. I also have some great new research that I'm going to share with you that we just announced at our Tourism Us meeting. We shared this data at our annual meeting, which I mentioned, Tourism Us. I would also like to thank Council President Harden for being a part of that, also Council Member Bankston, Council Member Barosa de Padilla, and I do know Auditor Kilgore was there as well. But according to the new research from Longwoods International, Columbus welcomed 51.2 million visitors to Greater Columbus in 2023. This was up from 49.6 million in 2022. The impact of those visitors is profound. According to another new report by Tourism Economics reflecting on last year, the study found that travel supported 82,568 jobs in Columbus and Franklin County. Visitors spent $8.2 billion at local businesses and generated $1.6 billion in local, state, and federal tax revenue. Your ongoing support and investment in Experience Columbus allows us to continue to have a positive impact on our entire community. As we look forward to some big initiatives that we have coming up this summer, we've just launched our new brand campaign, Yes Columbus. This is aimed at increasing visitors to Columbus. The campaign is a result of more than a year of research and marketing tested by Experience Columbus and our agency. This is the number that really hits home to me and hurts my heart, but only 13% of potential visitors outside of Columbus are very, I'm sorry, outside of Ohio are very familiar with Columbus. That is an opportunity that we have to take advantage of. So, we are working very diligently to maximize our integrated marketing strategy and grow this percentage. The campaign was created in partnership with the City of Columbus, Franklin County, One Columbus, and Downtown Columbus, Inc. We are also gearing up, along with the Greater Columbus Sports Commission and the entire city, for the Summer of Soccer, which will host three major events happening here, of which one is the MSL, I'm sorry, MLS All-Star Game in July. This event should bring an estimated $20 million in direct visitor spending. And looking ahead to August, we're going to have the African Methodist Episcopal Church's 52nd Quadrennial Session of the General Conference. This event is expected to be the largest event Columbus has hosted ever, and it will set records in both visitor spend and reserved room nights. We're going to have 13,000 people in Columbus for AME Church, and we're estimating that this event will generate a direct visitor spend of $21 million. Thank you for your time, support, and consideration of this ordinance, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. There's a lot of very exciting things going on in the world, and appreciate you and your team's hard work to make sure that when folks come to Columbus, they see not only the smiling faces of folks in our community, but are met with the services to make sure that when they plan large events, they've got folks like you all to do that important work with. Again, welcome more folks back to the city to provide the jobs that so many folks in our service industry rely upon. With that, are there any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you both. Council President, would you like me to move on to the Workforce Education Labor Committee?
Sure.
Sure. In that committee, we have ordinance 1186-2024 to authorize the Executive Director of the Office of Education to enter a contract with Columbus Early Learning Centers to plan and implement the 2024 Summer Success Program at the Hilltop Early Learning Center and eight-week summer intensive learning readiness program focused on pre-kindergarten children without prior early childhood education experience needed for developing key kindergarten readiness skills for achievement of the mayor's goal that every child is ready for kindergarten, and to author expenditure of $175,000 from the general fund and to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to declare emergency. Children who arrive in kindergarten with limited readiness face challenges in the transition into the kindergarten setting. Participation in quality early childhood education can provide an important mechanism for developing children's school readiness. Likewise, certain intentional parenting practices such as shared book reading, numeracy discussions, and also supports, also support school readiness. However, not all children have access to high-quality early childhood programs or intentional parenting practices at home. Because the mayor's Office of Education is requesting the authority to partner with the Columbus Early Learning Centers on the Summer Success Program, the Hilltop Early Learning Center, and eight-week summer intensive learning readiness program focused on pre-kindergarten services without prior early childhood experience. In addition, funding will be provided through this ordinance for important teacher and student recruitment activities for the 2024 and 2025 school year. 20 rising children will be enrolled in this eight-week Summer Success School Session where they will be provided with access to daily lessons and experiences structured for kindergarten preparations, three meals per day, low student-to-teacher ratios, full-day wraparound care, and if needed, based upon family circumstances, transportation. This organization was selected due to their existing contract with the city to serve as the master operator of the Hilltop Early Learning Center, and their experience providing quality early learning programs. Emergency legislation is required so the program can begin on June 1st here this year. Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And Council Presidents, all of my committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming before council is Public Service and Transportation Committee. It is chaired by Councilman Barosa de Padilla. Councilman, floor is yours.
Thank you. I have five ordinances today in public service and transportation, and I just want to take a quick point of privilege, because these ordinances, two of them include the installation of sidewalks, and then two of them are also about a major project that we are doing on the Hilltop in one of the thorough streets that connects Sullivan and West Broad Street. And so, those are pretty significant changes to this corridor, especially because the sidewalks are also on the west side. So, before I read the ordinances, Director, I don't know if there's something you want to say specifically about the projects and the impact that these will have on the west side.
All right. Good evening, President Harden, Chair Barosa de Padilla, members of council. You're right, these are very impactful projects for the Hilltop, particularly for those wanting to, you know, be able to walk and access trails and schools safely. The Wheatland Project this evening that we are, there's two ordinance on, it is a project that supports the Local Matters Farm, as well as the Wheatland Crossing Housing Development, and it's converting a one-way street to a safer two-way street. It is widening it out for parking that is existing on that street, and it allows, it adds a sidewalk project down the hill that connects to a trail project. The other, the two projects, Olive and Floral, and the Grace Street Project are two council projects that President Harden, you worked diligently on several years ago, and we are bringing these to construction, and they are supporting two schools out in the Hilltop. The Olive Street, it's actually three schools. Olive Street will access and connect West High School with a sidewalk from Powell Street to Wayne Street. As part of the Floral Avenue, it also is connecting Highland Elementary with a sidewalk from Oakley to Highland. And the Grace Street will connect to West Broad Street Elementary School, and it'll connect a new sidewalk from Oral to Roy's, and then a new sidewalk from Hague to Eureka. So, lots of new sidewalks in the Hilltop. These are safe routes to school funding, that they have federal funding attached to them because there was, unfortunately, some safety issues out there, and so we were able to make the case and get that funding.
And I just wanted to point this out, because as we talk about changing transportation and how we're making our streets safer, I just want to elevate the times when we are leaning in and creating those opportunities for our communities, for our children to be safer, and that's important, because I think that we can very easily read these ordinances and get caught up in the technicalities without seeing the people and without seeing the impact. And so, I just wanted to highlight this as we talked about these, this set of ordinances, because it is in a particular geographical area. It is along our, one of our proposed Link Us corridors, and I think that this, again, goes to show, this came way before Link Us came, but I think it just goes to show the impact that we are making in transportation, how we're really changing the conversation. So, thank you, Director, for that context. So, with that, I will start with ordinance 1308-2024 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints and order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fees simple unless there are real estate necessary to time to complete the Columbus Housing Initiative's Wheatland Avenue Project to authorize an expenditure of $432. This project includes improvements to Wheatland Avenue to convert the roadway to two-way traffic within the project limits. Improvements include concrete curbs, walks, storm sewer, bio-retention basin, trees, street lighting, and electrical transmission and distribution lines. The city must acquire certain fees simple title unless there are real estate located in the vicinity of Wheatland Avenue in the greater Hilltop planning area in order for the Department of Public Service to time to complete the public project. The city's acquisition of the real estate will help make, improve, or repair certain portions of the public right-of-way, which will be open to the public without charge. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next ordinance is 1341-2024 to amend the 2023 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grant Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with the Complete General Construction Company for the Signal's Flashing Yellow Arrow Implementation Pilot Project to authorize the expenditure of $1,678,546.28 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund for the project, and to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. This project will install vehicle signal heads with flashing yellow-red arrow capability at 10 intersections along Hilliard, Rome, and Roberts Roads. These new signals will help improve traffic flow and provide drivers more opportunities to complete safe turns along the roads where they will be installed. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1345-2024 to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into contract with Capstone and Associates Incorporated for the Operation Safe Walks School Sidewalk Olive Street Floral Avenue Project to authorize the expenditure of $1,172,881.44 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund for the project to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. This project will add sidewalks to Olive and Floral Streets in the Hilltop community as part of the Operation Safe Walks School Sidewalk. The sidewalks and curb ramps will be installed from Olive Street to Powell Avenue to Wayne Avenue and along Floral Avenue from Oakley to Highland. Sidewalk improvements like these will help students, faculty, parents, and community members walk or roll safely to and from their school. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Great. Next, we have ordinance 1419-2024 to amend the 2023 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Bridge Well Resources LLC for purchase of utility poles for the Wheatland Avenue Improvements Project to authorize the waiver of the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $112,852.00 for utility poles for the project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This also is part of the Wheatland Avenue Improvement Project. This project, again, spans from Wheatland Avenue Violet Street to Wheatland Avenue to Glenview Boulevard. They'll be converting the roadways to two-way traffic, installing sidewalks, et cetera, and this will also be the relocation of electricity distribution and improved street lighting. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have ordinance 1467-2024 to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Decker Construction Company for the Operation Safe Walks Grace Street Oral Avenue to Eureka Avenue Project to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,573,955.90 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund for the project to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. This project will install sidewalks along Grace Avenue between Oral Avenue and Eureka Avenue as a part of Operation Safe Sidewalks. This adds ADA-compliant sidewalks and improves existing curb ramps along Grace Street from Morel Avenue to the alley west of Roy's Avenue and from Hague to Eureka. This will allow residents and guests of the Hilltop community to walk or roll around the neighborhood safely. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barosa de Padilla de Alcara Doran's favor, Green Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Next committee to come before council is the Neighborhood, Recreation, and Parks Committee. That committee is chaired by That committee is chaired by Councilmember De Alcar. Councilman Floris yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First, we have 1031-2024 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to modify an existing contract with Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated to provide architectural and engineering services to the Gender Road Park and McCoy Park Improvements Project to authorize expenditure of $1,200,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Directors, could you, no, could you explain why we need to make this an emergency?
Councilmember De Alcar and members of council, the original contract was $400,000 for meeting with the public and creating a master plan, and now that we have the plan from the community input, we know what the project is going to be involved, and this modification and the reason for the emergency now is to start the construction drawings and get into the phase of construction management and get the project underway and get the majority of it complete before the winter season.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And lastly, I did have speakers, but we ran over so long that they got tired and they went home, and I thank them from the Village Network for hanging in there for, you know, over an hour. But our ordinance is 1439-2024 to authorize the city clerk to enter into grant agreements with the not-for-profit entities at Home on High, Central Community House, Clintonville Beachwell Community Resource Center, and Village Connections in support of their various Village programs, and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative's sub-fund of $50,000. This ordinance authorizes the city clerk to enter into grant agreements with four organizations within our Village Network. The entities are at Home on High, Central Community House, For Village Central, Clintonville Beachwell Community Resource Center, For Village in the Ville, and Village Connections. These programs serve neighbors age 50 and over with programs and services that enable them to age in place successfully. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all for my committee this evening.
Next committee to come before council is the Housing, Homes, and Villages Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Floris yours.
Council, thank you, Council President Harden. If I may, can we, may I make a request to move to 1458-2024? We've had some folks have patiently waited all night.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to introduce ordinance 1458-2024, and I will call Ms. Batts up to the podium as I read this. To approve the forgiveness of individual loans to homeowners who meet the eligibility requirements of the Housing Division's Homeowner Services Program, to authorize the city clerk on behalf of city council to execute the appropriate loan forgiveness forms, to authorize the director of the Department of Development to forgive said loans and declare an emergency. The city has operated several homeowner assistance programs funded by both federal and local sources since 1986 to provide critical and emergency home repairs for our neighbors. The goal is twofold: preservation of existing housing and to ensure that residents can remain in their homes and not be faced with homelessness. When home repair assistance was first offered to homeowners by the city, it came in the form of loans. These loans were frequently deferred with 0% interest, but a lien was placed on the home for the value of the repair. Over time, many of these programs were converted to grants without repayment requirement, which created inequity. Recognizing that there is a limited useful life of the home improvement and value for the city's investment, as well as the importance of ensuring that the city's programs do not perpetuate inequitable outcomes or limit wealth-building opportunities for those who have faced a legacy of systemic disinvestment, city council, on the recommendation of the Department of Development, passed ordinance 939-2023 implementing a loan forgiveness policy for the city's home ownership services. To date, a total of 158 homeowners have had loans forgiven, which equals to over $2 million. This legislation is a request for forgiveness of approximately $1,402,762.60. I will now turn the podium over to Ms. Batts.
Thank you, President Harden, Councilwoman Faber, and members of council. Thank you for having me today. Again, my name is Quinetta Batts, and I want to tell you a little story. So when my grandmother, Henrietta, excuse me, my grandmother Hattie Porter, who is in the room today, retired 12 years ago in 2011, she asked me to assist her with refinancing her home so she could consolidate some debt and have a more affordable payment in her retirement. In the process of that refinance, right at the very end of the process, we were informed that the city of Columbus had a lien on her home. In order to approve that process, she would have to get official approval from the city to do the refinance. So I started calling everybody. What is this loan, what is this lien, where did it come from? And I got in touch with a lady named BJ, who I understand has since retired, in the Housing Division, who informed us that that home improvement grant in 1993 was not a grant. In fact, it was a loan, and if she ever sold her house, even though almost 20 years had passed at that point, she would have to pay that grant back. The city did, in fact, sign off on her refinance, but this grant payback has really been hanging over her head ever since. So what did I do? I got back on the phone because Grandma was upset, so we got to get to the bottom of this. And when we spoke to BJ again, she informed us that not only did my grandmother have this similar grant, but my great-grandmother, who has now gone on to glory, had a similar program as well, and also my aunt Barbara, who lives on the south side of Columbus. So I sat the three contracts side by side, and for some reason, Barbara's had a line in there that indicated that it would be forgiven if she lived in her home for 10 years. For some reason, Grandma Hattie and Grandma Henrietta didn't have that same line about the forgiveness. So of course, we were confused. Although my grandmother didn't, in fact, plan on moving anytime soon, she was about to retire, and she really couldn't even consider it. She was very depressed and stressed and stressing me out in 2008, especially when the housing market crashed. And at one point, her home, the market value of her home was less than the lien and the amount that she would have had to pay the city if she decided to sell her home. So over the past 12 years, I've been in touch with BJ and others, and finally, here we are today. Finally, somehow, somebody put me in touch with a lady named Rita Parisa, and I don't know if she was here today, but I would love to give her a big hug. I shared the story with Rita, and she said, you know what? Let me look into it. And what she found was there were not only my grandmother and my great-grandmother, but many other people did not have a grant. In fact, they had a loan that would have to be repaid back in the instance of them selling their homes, even though, like I said, 20-plus years had passed. And many of those things that the city repaired for them in the 90s, they've had to repair again already. So first, so why am I here, right? I don't expect any drama about this. I hope there won't be any drama, but we've been working on this for 12 years, and so we had to be here to see it for ourselves. And I really just want to thank BJ and Rita for bringing this to your attention. And I'm hopeful, you know, I know that a lot of people have given up on democracy. A lot of people are coming in here yelling and screaming, we did not take that approach. But I do want to make sure that you understand, this has been 12 years in the making, and had someone 12 years ago just listened to us and took a look at it, we probably could have done this a long time ago. But thank you so much for your time. I'm so excited that not only my grandmother, my great-grandmother, who is now resting in heaven, but also all the other individuals who are on this docket and will see forgiveness as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Barrosa de Padilla.
So first of all, I'm sorry that it was a 12-year journey for you to get here, but what a remarkable story it is. And I often tell the story of my mother, who's 84 years young, living in her house, still paying for her house, because that is the only safety net for many of our families. And so thank you for your fight, because your fight is now helping to make it easier for others, right? Putting this on our radar for not just the people here, but for all the folks in the department that you've worked with, right? We learn from our mistakes, and we do better, and we do better for more people. And so I hope that this gives your family peace of mind. Thank you so much for being here, especially for the long wait that you had. I'm sure after 12 years and the couple hours was...
We're having a party tomorrow.
But I appreciate, but I appreciate that. And again, thank you for sharing that story, and thank you to your...
My grandmother and my great-aunt are here, back here with me.
Thank you both for being here. Thank you for, and again, I hope this brings you some peace, and it gives you some peace of mind, especially at this time, when this is the time in your life where you should have it the most.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Batts. We appreciate you. And then we have one more testimony scheduled for this evening. Mr. Nate Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Lieutenant George Wilkins. I'm a resident for more than 15 years, London. Yes, I do support this, and let me tell you why. I would like to see this in place for more than 125 years. And the reason why I say this is because the young lady that spoke about those two individuals has long retired. And like I say, this is really close to me, because like I said, I took in my mother some help when she was in her house, but she's long gone again. And like I said, again, I would like to see this in place for a long time, especially with elderly and disability people. So again, I'd just like to have this in place for a very long time, especially with aging people that's living in their own, especially for the elderly population, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, and Ms. Batts, for your continued advocacy. I, for one, have, am incredibly grateful to the Department of Development for seeing this all the way through. I believe I became aware, made aware of this specific situation back in 2020, and it took us quite a while to get here, not as long as Ms. Batts. So thank you for handing in, handing in the fight, but complete appreciation to the department for seeing a program all the way through. And so many of the loans that are being forgiven, they do not require council making a decision, taking it up for a vote if it is less than 20,000. I'm looking at Director Prosser just to make sure I got this correct, but anything over 20,000 does require council action. Is that correct? Okay, wonderful. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1393-2024 to amend ordinance number 3448-2023 to reinstate policy transition language available to project sponsors prior to the enactment of ordinance number 3448-2023 and clarify administrative procedures. On December 11, 2023, Columbus City Council adopted ordinance number 3448-2023, which created the Columbus Housing Community Reinvestment Area, expanding the geographic area for residential tax abatement eligibility under Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes. Prior to the creation of the CHCRA, Columbus City Council amended several community reinvestment areas to adopt transition language to provide project sponsors additional time to obtain the benefits of the policies applicable to a given CRA prior to the enactment of ordinance numbers 1843-2022 and 1839-2023, which adopted affordability requirements in connection with receipt of tax abatement under Ohio Revised Code Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70. Such transition language provided a project sponsor the opportunity to follow the requirements established by ordinance numbers 2184-2018 and 2781-2018 if the project sponsors either a) obtained all necessary building permits on or before August 31, 2023, or b) closed on all project construction financing and obtained at least 50% of the project's building permits by August 31, 2023. Sections 3B and 5 of the CHCRA ordinance, however, absorbed and dissolved a number of the previously existing CRAs that contained the 2022 policy transition. As a result of the enactment of the CHRCA ordinance and the dissolution of certain of the CRAs that contained the 2022 policy transition, the 2022 policy transition was inadvertently eliminated from the CRAs that were dissolved and absorbed into the boundaries of the CHCRA. The Director of the Department of Development finds that, in fairness to the project sponsors who were relying upon the 2022 policy transition to complete their respective development projects, it is necessary to amend the ordinance to reinstate the 2022 policy transition for those project sponsors affected by the enactment of the ordinance. City council wishes to amend the ordinance to expressly authorize project sponsors who were eligible to take advantage of the policy. That was a lot. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues for the department to answer? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
I'm so sorry. Oh, my apologies. First, I request to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Now I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Council, Council President Harden, may I move on to rules and policy?
Please.
First, we have ordinance 1338-2024 to amend City Section 599.01 relating to clean zone license definitions to correct an error. Ordinance number 0768-2024 passed by this council on March 18, 2024 amended various sections of City Code in order to transfer the License Section and Ways and Measure Section from the Department of Public Safety to the Department of Building and Zoning Services. It has been determined that there was an error in an amendment to City Code Section 599.01 relating to clean zone license definitions. This ordinance is necessary to correct that error. There is no fiscal impact related to this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have ordinance 1392-2024 to amend ordinance number 3447-2023 to clarify the title of said ordinance and to correct a clerical error to reference the correct section of Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes, changing the reference from 456510 to 45465513. On December 11, 2023, Columbus City Council adopted ordinance number 3447-2023, which amended certain sections of Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes. Due to a clerical error, the title, background section, and section 2 of ordinance number 3447-2023 needed to be amended. This legislation amends ordinance number 3447-2023 to correct the clerical errors in that legislation. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I first request to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
And now I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcawar, Dorance Faber-Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Green, Councilman Floris yours.
Yeah, if I might also just go a little bit out of order, because we also have a speaker that has been waiting, and would like to move to ordinance number 1588-2024. And as I am introducing this, I would like to invite Chuck Garing, President and CEO of Life Care Alliance, up to the podium. So ordinance number 1588-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Life Care Alliance in the amount of $1 million to support the Meals on Wheels program and authorize expenses starting January 1, 2024 to authorize a transfer of appropriations within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million within the general fund, and to declare an emergency. For over 125 years, Life Care Alliance has been providing health and nutrition services that keep people safe, independent, and living in their homes where they want to be. Life Care Alliance continues to accept all clients without a waiting list, and Meals on Wheels provides nourishing food and a daily visit to homebound older adults and individuals with a medical challenge or disability. The cost of, at the cost of $5 a meal, this program will be able to serve 200,000 meals to individuals in the city of Columbus. We are requesting emergency action in order to avoid any disruption of this critical service for our seniors and vulnerable residents, and we'd like to welcome President Garing to city council today and just ask if you can say a little bit about the Meals on Wheels program and how it impacts older adults and what this, what this funding means for your overall budget and ability to continue operating.
Thank you, Councilmember Green, and I would have waited here till next week to get the chance to thank you for this. I can't thank you enough. When COVID hit, we went up 65% in, here in Columbus, Ohio, in home-delivered meals because people couldn't get to the store, and they were desperate. While we have people of all backgrounds, 70% of our folks that we service live on under $1,200 a month. It's a social security check that's old, and they just need help. For the last two and a half years, though, Meals on Wheels for us have been up between $1,200. For the last two and a half years, though, Meals on Wheels for us have been up between eighty-three and eighty-eight percent from pre-COVID numbers, and it doesn't look like it's going away anytime soon. This is our new normal. The fact of the matter is, we are the only major city in the top one hundred markets in the United States without waiting lists for the Meals on Wheels program, and that has been that way for the last twenty years. So we're very, very proud of that, and I'm very proud of that, having grown up in the Hilltop, and I can tell you, I've been a resident for all thirty-nine years of my life. You can laugh at that. If you are, if you are in a major city in the United States right now, you have a thousand, two thousand, or more people ahead of you on a waiting list for Meals on Wheels, which is a waiting list for food. What's happened over the past couple of years is that while people may be able to get back to the store now and buy some things, they can't afford the goods there. So the meals are allowing them to be able to pay their rents and do other things and buy medicines in their life. The city of Columbus assisted Life Care Alliance a couple of years ago with rents and utility monies, which we went through very quickly, and I can tell you, we're still paying rents and utilities without city money to assist people in staying in their homes. Even though our agency has lost two million dollars from operations in twenty twenty-two and three million in twenty twenty-three, we continue to accept all those who qualify and are in need, and we will continue to do that. We're getting this corrected, and we will be able to continue on for more than our hundred and twenty-six years that we've been here. Our fundraising is robust, people are helping, they're answering the call, and we're getting meals out to the citizens of Columbus, Ohio. If people need the help, they will get it from us. The bottom line to this is we save, according to AARP, over ninety thousand dollars per person per year for each person we keep independent and in their own homes where they all want to be. And that's because that money would have been used by Medicaid to pay for them to go to assisted living and nursing home, uh, locations. So I can't thank you all enough. Without your help, this would not be happening, and you have the best program in the United States of America, and you will continue to have it. I will pledge that to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garing, and we just, we just genuinely want to extend our thanks to you, um, for all the work that you do. It's so much more than just providing a meal to people. You're also providing, um, providing, uh, partnership, and you're there to check on people's welfare and, and ensure their well-being, and it means the world, and I know we've had to have some tough budget conversations tonight, um, but this, um, this is tangibly keeping people alive, um, and keeping people healthy and engaged and supported in our community, and so we can't thank you enough for the work that you do, um, to help, to help keep that going. Um, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, and thank you so much for being here again, Chuck, and for waiting. Um, the next ordinance that we have, um, on the agenda tonight is ordinance number fourteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to appropriate the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars within the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the Recreation and Parks Department to provide home care and assisted living services to older adults in connection with the pre-admission screening system, providing options and resources today, also known as the Passport Medicaid Waiver Program in central Ohio, and to declare an emergency. Passport is a statewide Medicaid, uh, waiver program that provides services to persons aged sixty or older that meet certain, uh, requirements, and they provide, uh, things like homemaker support, transportation, personal care services, home-delivered meals, emergency response systems, and adult day services, as well as case management. Approximately eight thousand seven hundred clients are currently being served, uh, by C O triple A under the Passport Program, um, and so we are, um, equally, um, requesting emergency action, uh, in order to meet the conditions of that grant, so that providers can be paid within thirty days of providing a service, uh, or reimbursed for the services that they provided, um, and so that services can continue beyond June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four of this year. Um, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And, uh, last ordinance tonight, ordinance number fourteen eighty-six dash twenty, dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director, um, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with agencies listed on, um, the attachment here, too, for the provision of pre, the pre-admission screening system, providing options and resources today, Passport, uh, home care and assisted living services for older adults in central Ohio, to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and thirty million dollars from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. A bid waiver is requested for these contracts in order to comply with the Passport Administrative Agency Rules and Regulations set forth in the grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Aging and the Ohio Department of Medicaid, as defined by OAC, uh, one seven three dash thirty-nine. C O triple A, as the, um, Passport Administrative Agency for Central Ohio, is required to enter into contract with all ODA-certified Passport Providers within the central Ohio service area within sixty days of certification. This requires C O triple A to enter into the contract with new providers more regularly than our competitive bidding process will allow here at the city. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have in my committees tonight.
Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy, Councilmember Floris Joyce.
Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight I have ordinance thirteen fifty-one, twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Sport Services to enter into a service agreement with Day Funeral Service LLC for indigent cremation services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of two hundred and eighty thousand from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Ohio Revised Code nine point one five requires that the city be responsible for the cost of beer, bear, burri, burial, burial, thank you, or cremation of an indigent person. The scope of the services for this contract will include processing, negotiating, and auditing indigent cremation claims. Director, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Uh, Council President Harden, Councilmember Remy, um, it's in the best interest of the city of Columbus to, um, stay in contract with Day Funeral Services to continue this program without interruption. Um, furthermore, uh, Day Funeral Service was the only person that bid on the contract. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Director. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next I have ordinance fourteen ninety-two, twenty twenty-four to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to enter into contract for helicopter maintenance with Helicopter Minutemen, Inc., for the Division of Police to authorize the expenditure of one million, two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The agreement will be used to repair and maintain the fleet of police helicopters as required by the FAA. The agreement shall meet the criteria and standards related to aviation maintenance as set forth in the airborne law enforcement accreditation certification process. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
And finally, I have fifteen thirty, twenty twenty-four to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit captioned Austin Williams et al. versus the city of Columbus et al., United States District Court Case Number two-two-two, CV eighteen thirty-one, to authorize the transfer in expenditure of the sum of, um, fifty thousand dollars and zero cents in settlement of the lawsuit and to declare an emergency. At this time, I'd like to ask Laura Baker-Morse from the city attorney's office to provide a short brief on this settlement.
Thank you, Chair Remy. Honor about June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, plaintiffs Austin Williams and Alexandra Davis were present at the George Floyd protests in downtown Columbus. The plaintiffs were at the corner of Broad and High. A large crowd had gathered, and Columbus police officers were dispatched and told to follow Field Force Operations Protocol. Officers formed two stationary lines along High Street where the protests were occurring. Officer Rodney Hall was stationed at the northwest corner of the intersection of Broad and High, and the plaintiffs were on the sidewalk at that same corner. Plaintiff Davis began spitting into the street towards where Officer Hall was standing. Officer Hall gave five to seven verbal commands over the course of about ten minutes for plaintiff to stop spitting in his direction. Officer Hall gave a final warning that if plaintiff Davis were to spit again, she would be arrested. Plaintiff Davis spit once more in the direction of Officer Hall with the spit landing on Hall's shoe. Officer Hall approached plaintiff Davis, who was sitting on the sidewalk curb, to arrest her. Officer Hall took hold of her wrists using Level One force to pull plaintiff Davis by her arms a few feet away from the curb. Plaintiff Davis was then placed in a prone position and handcuffed. When Officer Hall approached plaintiff Davis to effectuate the arrest, plaintiff Williams approached and began to interfere with the arrest by grabbing at plaintiff Davis and Officer Hall. Officer Robert Davis utilized a takedown to stop plaintiff Williams from interfering with the arrest of plaintiff Davis. Plaintiff Williams was then placed on the ground and handcuffed without further incident. Plaintiff Davis was charged with harassment with a bodily substance and resisting arrest and spent one night in jail. Both charges were later dismissed. Plaintiff Williams was charged with resisting arrest, which was also dismissed. Plaintiffs Davis and Williams brought claims in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio against Officer Davis, unnamed officers, former Chief Quinlin, and the city of Columbus. Plaintiff Davis brought claims of excessive force, violation of freedoms of speech, gross negligence, and battery. Plaintiff Williams asserted the same claims and added a malicious prosecution claim. After disclosure and examination of expert witnesses, plaintiff Williams voluntarily dismissed himself from the lawsuit, along with all claims against Officer Davis. The defendants then filed for summary judgment, and all claims against former Chief Quinlin, as well as against the unnamed officers, were dismissed. Surviving summary judgment was simple, was only a manel claim of excessive force against the city under a theory of inadequate training or supervision. The parties were able to reach an agreed settlement for fifty thousand dollars to resolve the remaining claim. The city attorney's office believes that the settlement amount is fair and reasonable, given the risk of taking this case to jury trial in light of the possibility of attorney's fees. The funds to pay for this settlement will come from the general fund, and the settlement will release the city, all of its employees, for many and all claims arising out of the June twentieth, twenty twenty, arrest of Alexander Davis. If there are any further questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Chief Counsel. Um, just to ask, what do you, you've mentioned the attorney fees, and that's one of the biggest concerns here. Um, what, what were some of the estimates on that, given the amount of discovery that's been done so far, et cetera?
Uh, Councilmember, member Remy, I'm afraid I, I had that information earlier, and I have misplaced it. Perhaps the Director of Public Safety might have any information?
Director.
Councilmembers, I apologize, I don't.
Okay.
I can say it was substantial since we went through summary judgment and discovery, and expert witnesses had already been obtained.
I'd heard several hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, that would be about accurate.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row. Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you very much, Council President. That is all I have in the Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening.
Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee and Sustainability, chaired by Councilmember Weich, Councilmember Floris Joyce.
Thank you, President Harden. All right, everyone, we're at the end of the agenda here. I only have four ordinances in Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, so yay. Uh, first, I have ordinance eleven fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Intech Corporation for the Allen Creek Trunk South Phase One Project, to authorize an amendment to the twenty-twenty-three capital improvement budget, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to thirty million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund to pay for the project. The sewer rehabilitation project is located almost entirely within Three Creeks Metro Park. Uh, this project will rehabilitate approximately eighty-four hundred-plus lineal feet of reinforced concrete pipe. The rehabilitation of the sewer will prevent structural failures that will result in overflows to homes and/or receiving streams, as well as extend the useful service life of the sewer for a minimum of fifty years. Let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next I have thirteen ninety-seven dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with Impact Community Action for implementation of the Empowered Program, a Clean Energy Jobs Program in Neighborhood Energy Efficiency Measures, uh, to authorize the transfer of two million, three hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund income tax set aside sub-fund to the Sustainable Columbus Fund, to authorize the appropriation of two million, three hundred and fifty thousand within the Sustainable Columbus Fund, and to authorize an expenditure of two million, three hundred and fifty thousand from the Columbus, uh, Sustainable Columbus Fund. Uh, Empowered is a Clean Energy Jobs Program that provides training and on-the-job experience for careers in the clean energy sector for Columbus residents aged eighteen to twenty-four. This funding will support three cohorts of program participants over the next year, providing training to establish the skills and knowledge needed to be competitive candidate for full-time employment within the clean energy sector. Uh, the funding will also include support for energy efficiency appliance upgrades for traditional weatherization assistance program participants, uh, that is available to residents living below two hundred percent of the federal poverty line. Uh, it is important for us to support this work because we know that in order to meet the goals outlined in the city's climate action plan, we must have a well-trained workforce to help us create energy efficiency, energy-efficient, sustainable neighborhoods. Uh, let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next I have fourteen twenty dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to pay the state of Ohio Treasurer, Department of Natural Resources, for operation and maintenance services and water entitlement costs for withdrawing water from the Allen Creek Reservoir for the Division of Water, to authorize the expenditure of two million, three hundred and twenty-nine, uh, I'm sorry, two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents from the Water Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. Uh, nineteen seventy-one, the city of Columbus entered an agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Natural Resources that allows the Division of Water to withdraw water from Allen Creek Reservoir and to pay a prorated share of the operation and maintenance costs through an annual payment. Uh, this is an annual expenditure in the Division of Water allocated funds for this purpose in the twenty-twenty-four Water Operating Fund budget. However, due to an unexpected maintenance project with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, dam gate rehab last year, and the corresponding, uh, corresponding Department of Public Utilities associated share of the cost, expense is over the expected budget amount for the year. Uh, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency, emergency due to the bill being due June thirtieth. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Last, I have, uh, ordinance fifteen thirty-one dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a, an agreement with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for the purpose of conducting the city's twenty-twenty-three greenhouse gas inventory as it pertains to the Climate Disclosure Project Reporting Guidelines and Requirements, to authorize an expenditure of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Electricity Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. Uh, the city of Columbus conducts greenhouse gas inventories annually. These yearly data collection efforts provide transparency for monitoring progress and, uh, collectively provide the information needed to adjust and retool actions and strategies in our climate action plan. Uh, let me stop there. Director, can you, uh, Deputy Director, can you just speak a little bit about the Climate Disclosure Project?
President Harden, members of council, thank you. Uh, the Climate Disclosure Project, it's a nonprofit organization, uh, that takes our climate action data from Morpsey, uh, takes our emissions data, some energy consumption data, and climate targets. Uh, once they receive all this data, they run it through, um, some analysis, and we get a, an overall score, uh, and we get a feedback report where we get to see where we are here locally. We have a, a minus score from last year, and then we also get to see where we score regionally and globally. Uh, so we're very happy that, of our score of A, A minus, and we hope to continue that in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Uh, that is all I have for my committee this evening.
See no further visits coming forward. Council, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Clerk please call the row.
Berroso de Padilla, De Alcauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. The next.